I call to order the December 14, 2020, meeting of the Oxford Planting Commission. We have five in attendance. We have Commissioner Freeman is online. Commissioner King will be online, we think, shortly, but we have a quorum. There's, there he is.
I'm here, Brian.
Thanks, Marvin. With the call to order now, we will approve the agenda. Before we, well, let's approve the agenda first. Commissioners, having reviewed the agenda, any changes, additions, or deletions to be made to the current agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion from the live audience here. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Commissioner King, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Here in the, in the hall, show of hands. All right, the agenda's approved. With the agenda being approved, I want to note two postponements which involve the same case. They are case 2694 and 2695. These two cases are involving certain requests by RAND management for a service station located, to be located, or requested to be located on Molly Bar Road or Mississippi Highway 30. I know there were some people, there were people who either anticipated attending either live or online for that. Those two cases have been postponed. If you are here to object or to show support for either of those cases involving RAND management, please know they will not be heard today. They will be heard next month. It is our understanding. The applicant had removed it to make some revisions to the plans. So, with that, we will get to approval of the minutes from the November 9, 2020, meeting. Commissioners, any changes which needed to be made? Commissioner Freeman, Commissioner King, any changes?
No.
All right. I'll entertain a motion. Hearing no changes to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the November 9, 2020, minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor here. Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you. The minutes are approved. No staff report listed, anything?
Mr. Chairman, can I, I do want to make one comment about the staff report. Ben, I don't know if we had one last month either, but I would like to kind of see one maybe next month to just see what COVID has done to our building, if at all possible.
If we had one last month, but we're working through some numbers.
Maybe it was the month before. I just ask, I may, well, maybe I missed it last month, but yeah, okay, good deal. Thank you.
All right. There were five cases submitted for administrative approval. And now, which brings us to our consent agenda. This contains four cases, excuse me, three cases. One has been withdrawn. The cases are public hearing for case number 2692, Oxford Healthcare Properties. It's a request for a special exception for uses as to a medical center for Oxford Orthopedic Sports Medical Office Building located at Belk Boulevard at Nicole Lane. The second is public hearing for case number 2693, John and Kristen Brown. They filed a request for a variance from section 2.6.3. It's a front yard build-to line property located at 400 Country Club Road. Lastly, on the consent agenda is public hearing for case number 2703, Joel and Beth Smith. It is also a request for a variance under section 3.6.3 as to the side yard setback line, property located at 240 St. Andrews Circle. Is there anyone here who wishes to voice an objection to any of those three cases on the consent agenda? Anyone online? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's a motion to approve the cases on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor. Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. Those three cases have been approved. If you're here for either of those three cases, you are good to go. Which brings us now to our actual public hearings. The first being public hearing for case number 2696. It's Rebel Hospitality LLC. It's a site plan approval for the Velvet District, property located lot 16 and lot 17 of the Oxford Commons PUD.
Thanks, Brian. The subject property is just over two acres and is located south of Sisk Avenue at the intersection of Hopkins Drive and Commonwealth Boulevard in Oxford Commons. It is referred to as Lot 16 and 17 in the Oxford Commons PUD in Phase 1, Track C. The applicant is proposing two two-story multipurpose buildings. The buildings will have office, retail, and restaurant spaces. There's no residential component to these buildings, and one building will be situated on each lot with a total of 114 shared parking spaces between the two lots. An outdoor courtyard with landscaping and seating separates the two buildings. A special exception to the front yard build-to maximum was granted at the November Planting Commission meeting. Related to the use and parking requirements, as is stated, there will be 114 spaces provided. The required parking space is calculated, included multi-purpose commercial with bank, office, retail, restaurant, and gyms considered. The developer's attorney is actively working on a shared parking agreement between the two lots, and that's one of the conditions of approval. Architecturally, the buildings are modern. Will both have white painted brick with bronze accents. Again, related to the easements on page C9 of the civil drawings, it includes a site overview of the proposed easements. The attorney is working on including each of the three easements that we've required for approval. Those are the cross-access easement, a shared parking agreement, and a stormwater detention easement. A photometric lighting plan is required for the site due to proximity to nearby single-family uses. The developer understands that a condition of approval will be that the study be completed prior to the issuance of any building permits. The proposed landscape design meets all standards related to parking lot trees and landscaping requirements. The HVAC units on the rooftop will be screened by the proposed parapets of the design. For engineering comments, the site will have ingress and egress points to the east on the Commonwealth Boulevard, to the west on to Mansell Lane, which is currently a private road, and to the south on Hopkins Drive. As part of this project, the owner proposes, along with the adjacent owners of lot 15 of the PUD, to convert Mansell Lane to a one-way street traveling south. The stormwater requirements will be met by an underground detention system located in the southeast portion of lot 17. As of this, end of last week, the final stormwater report has been approved. So, condition number eight has been satisfied. Staff recommends approval of the site plan for the Velvet District with the conditions stated in your report.
Any questions from the commissioners here?
I do have a couple, Mr. Chairman. Rayanna?
She's on the.
Oh, where'd she go?
I'm here.
You there?
I'm here.
Hold up, found the sentence. There was one sentence in here that I had a question about. I guess it was part of y'alls. Careful attention should be given to the foundation design of the building, in particular that it is designed to withstand sudden catastrophic failure of the underground detention system. For a run-of-the-mill site plan, that was a little bit alarming. Is there something going on there?
It's not as alarming as it sounds when you put it in engineering speak. The issue or the concern is that this detention center is very, very close to the building footprint, closer than you typically see. And so, what we want to make sure is that should that pipe collapse, that that building foundation is able to withstand a collapse of that pipe. So, and it's just because of how close it is to the building. It's not anything that a structural engineer is going to blink at. They're going to take that into account, but we want to see it just as an extra layer of security.
Okay. And then, second question I had is, talk about converting Mansell Road to one-way to just go south. Because even as I was coming up here to the meeting, there were cars coming north on it.
Yeah, and I'm assuming Kevin is there in person upstairs to speak, so he can also speak more to it. But during our review process, we had concerns about the potential for traffic backing up on the Sisk as they're trying to turn from Sisk into this site because of how close the driveway is. We were concerned about it, and we were having conversations along the lines of how close is it relative to the FNB Bank driveway, and how close is it relative to Wendy's? How close their driveway is to Sisk? And as we were going through those conversations, the engineer proposed, well, what if we just convert it to a one-way street? That was not a requirement from engineering, but that was something that they proposed. It's a private street, and so, as a private street, we'll allow it. I've got reservations about how compliant people are going to be, but we have one-way streets in Oxford that people are not compliant on, so that's going to happen. But that was also the possibility about it.
Okay.
Yeah, the concern was if someone, the northwestern drive is very close to Sisk on the site plan. And if someone were turning in, going south, and wanted to turn across that lane, if there were cars backed up going northbound trying to turn on to Sisk, then that person could back traffic up onto Sisk. And with the traffic light in down the street and the roundabout to the west, I threw the idea out there to our client about making it one-way southbound where folks turning in from Sisk to the site would have no conflicts. The lot property lot is actually in the center of Mansell Lane, so we had to go to the lot owner to the west and get their blessing because they own half of the street. At this point, plan would be to use striking. It is a road that's wide enough for two cars to meet. You know, how do you stop someone from trying to use it? I don't know. We have not discussed making the road more narrow. I could potentially see, you know, you could put parallel parking on one side, but now those numbers are not included in the parking numbers in the site plan. But I threw it out there. Both our client and the, and the property owner to the west agreed to it. And it seemed to solve a problem with people that may back up onto Sisk, which was the concern during the first, the first round of review.
Yes, the only thing I was thinking was, and it's really only twice a day for 30, 45 minutes, when the elementary school is sending all that traffic out. So if we close that so that it's one-way coming south, then the only egress would be all of the traffic with the walkers and riders going north from Della, and then, I guess, going all the way back up entering into the roundabout off Ed Perry, right? Because there's not another road. So, was that taken into consideration? I mean, you're going to have two 45-minute blocks that are pretty heavy with you.
There was not a traffic study done. Again, it was a comment that was made. Our concern was keep people from backing up onto Sisk.
Yeah. That's, that's the only thing I would say just about this, is take a look at that and see if that does, you know, because you're taking all of those medical offices and businesses and the long-term resident care facility, and you're shuttling them into the school traffic two times a day for about 45 minutes if you make that a one-way street. So.
What time of day?
Seven fifteen to seven forty-five, and then probably two thirty to three fifteen, something like that.
Maybe around that time.
Yeah. So, that's where they just put that light, you know. So you're, really, you're funneling them into a line that now just has that, that light right there.
I don't know if we'd have to get permission from the city, being that it's, that the road is private, but we could set up some temporary strike and just see how it goes one or two days like they did on University Avenue a couple of years ago, and just, just see.
Yeah, that's.
What we can do during school.
Yeah, just, just explore, say, like I said, you know, it may be that doesn't make a lick of difference, but you are taking away the kind of alternate outbound, you know, lane right there to avoid all that school traffic. So.
And I also would add, if there is a greater concern on, on the commission's behalf that the school impact is going to be worse than the potential for someone to back up into Sisk, into that driveway due to the site distance, then engineering will, will default to that. I agree that school traffic is different out there. We don't, we don't have the regulatory authority to say they have to keep it a one-way, that they have to keep it open to both ways because it's a private street.
Yeah.
We just offered our concern about that, about the, how close it was to that intersection. But I would absolutely defer to any preferences by the commission, if y'all would prefer to keep that street two-way operational, and if the applicant would agree to that.
Rayanna, this, thank you for putting it that way. And Duncan, thank you for bringing it up. I hadn't, I hadn't thought about it, but as I'm looking at the, you know, the map and, you know, I do worry, especially if there ends up being later development north of Della but south of Sisk. I guess the school district owns that land, and I know that their plans have been delayed there, but I guess what I'm getting at is in the future, there's just going to be more and more traffic there coming through that light. And so, if, if there's fewer options for people to get to Sisk, I could see that being concerning because I, as a parent of a Della student right now, I do see how backed up that gets. And so, I think that's worth looking into. I, I don't know if it's better. I also know how bad it is to have traffic backed up onto Sisk. So, maybe this is a lesser of two evils sort of thing, but I definitely would like a little more information on that. So if they could do a, like we did on University Avenue a couple of years ago, and maybe just for a few days, see what it's like with one-way traffic there, that does seem to me a good idea worth exploring.
Any additional?
I'm good with that.
You okay, Rayanna?
I am.
Is it possible for us to grant the site plan approval, and I'm thinking out loud here, with a contingency that, I mean, I understand, again, if they wanted to make it one-way, they could pending our approval of the site plan. Kevin, you may have some ideas. Like you said, if we put a contingency on it, then we make it, or we at least examine the possibility of a one-way. Can we refrain, I guess, approve the site plan and leave that out pending what they want to do? I mean, you guys will do, if you close it off, what you would do right now is you'd make it one-way and see how that goes, right?
Yes. We would put up probably a temporary do-not-enter on one end, and a one-way on one end, maybe some striped arrows, and just let it run for a couple of days. And of course, we'd let the city know and the school know.
Sure.
And probably have some folks out there to kind of see how that affects it. And I guess we're.
You know, the line that's already in there, engineering reserves are right to evaluate the traffic flow patterns and issues. I mean, I feel like that covers it, what I'm concerned about. It just, now we know what to look at in terms of the traffic flow and pattern.
Yeah, and my, my primary statement was to gauge, if my understanding from you, Kevin, is right, you guys just were throwing it out there that, hey, this is an option that we may want to look at, but it's not a requirement, hey, we're going to do this, we're not going to do that.
The comment on the first review was there was concern about how close that entrance was to Sisk.
Sure.
And traffic backing up onto Sisk. And we tried to move it as far south as we could, but it didn't work with the site plan. And this was the result, was the idea that if we take the conflict away, then, you know.
If it works, it works. If it doesn't, it doesn't, I guess, is sort of my comment. Okay. And you're satisfied that that?
Yeah, if we just faithfully take a look, and we know what we're looking for, and we figure out the best solution. So, but that's just kind of one thing that popped into my head, sort of playing that through. So.
Any additional comments or questions?
I have a question. Maybe this is nothing, but when I drove past the property, it looked like there was a for-sale sign on the lot. Is that right?
I have not been out there, so.
Anybody else notice? I mean, it's a huge plywood sign. I didn't know if it was a remnant or if that was the case, that it was for sale. And the only reason I ask is whether there's any uncertainty in the use associated with this building, if it's sold prior to being occupied.
I'm not aware of those. Well, I think that that sign's been out there for quite a while.
Yeah, it's, okay. Any additional questions online, commissioners? All right, hearing none, anyone here tonight wishes to voice an objection or have a comment, question? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion as to case numbers 2696.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve with the conditions stated, including the evaluation of the traffic flow pattern.
I have a motion to approve, subject to the conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor. Commissioner King, how do you vote? Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Case number, next case for public hearing is 2697. It's Oxford Healthcare Properties. It's a request for site plan approval for Oxford Orthopedic Sports Medical Office Building. It's property located at Belk Boulevard at Nicole Lane. Ben?
So, the property measure is about 4.3 acres. It's located, as you mentioned, at the Belk Boulevard north of Baptist Hospital. It's on the north side of Belk Boulevard at the corner of Nicole Lane. The applicant is proposing to construct, it's a two-story medical office building to include orthopedics, physical therapy, and other medical specialties. The medical office building is built on property that's owned by Baptist Hospital, and it will be leased to the building developer-owner under a long-term ground lease. This use for a medical office building at this location is consistent with the intent of the zoning district of institutional medical. The proposal is, across from the recently constructed Baptist Memorial Hospital, when it's located in, when a building is located in this district, proposal that exceeds 15,000 square feet may be requested by special exception. That special exception was requested and was granted on the consent agenda. There is a requirement that any proposal should comply with all of the requirements in section 3, or in this case, 3.9.1. The applicant has, has provided adequate parking. It does comply with the standards. It doesn't exceed the, the maximum allowed or the additional 25%. They are in compliance or under the 80% lot coverage requirements. Landscaping for the site does include foundation plantings around the proposed building. The parking lot frontage trees proposed comply with the regulations of this, of the development code. Building height is in compliance. Building materials, this is important, and it leads to a condition. Building is constructed primarily of a mix of brick, porcelain, tile, and glass. It does consist of a few sections of metal paneling. And as you, some of you may remember, metal paneling does require, or metal as a material does require a special exception. And, you know, I think it was something that we just didn't see. When you zoom in on the actual detailing, it's a little bit clearer to see that it had metal paneling. Did speak with the applicant, and that's something that they will come back for, for a special exception, which is a condition of approval. But we think it's consistent with their metal paneling that this commission has approved in other cases, kind of like the pavilion, you know, the metal paneling that's on the, the west side of the pavilion makes the lesser of the north side. Signage will be a separate approval, although we have been discussing that with them. It looks like they're going to put some signage at the, the corner of the building, and then a monument sign off of Belk, Belk. Engineering did provide comments related to water, water and sewer utilities, traffic and access, sidewalks, and stormwater management. And all other departments have reviewed the proposal and recommend approval. So therefore, staff recommends approval of the site plan with two conditions. Prior to the issuance of any building permits, the applicant shall be granted a special exception for the building materials, for the use of metal panels, and the approvals for the plan as submitted.
Thank you, Ben.
You bet.
Any questions here? Commissioners online, any questions?
No.
Hearing none. Any questions here in the audience? Anyone wish to object? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion as to case number 2697.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve. Just for clarification, I do think we need to include on the first condition as provided in section 5.6.1.8, as opposed to just an open-ended special exception. But I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions stated.
I have a motion to approve with the conditions stated and added the particular section in which they will need to grant a special exception. Is there a second as to that motion?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor. Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
It is approved. Next case for consideration is case number 2698. It's Andrew Calcutta. It's for site plan approval for Oxford Farms Senior Living Phase 2, the memory care building, property located at South Lamar Boulevard. Ben?
Thank you. And I'm sure the commission remembers this property. It's been the subject of several cases related to variances for build-to maximum height variance for the single-story building, or the special exception, I guess, for a single story, and then also for the use. The property, it's about 4.57 acres. It's in the Oxford Farms development. It's on the west side of South Lamar. It's just south of the Oxford Pediatric Building. The applicant is proposing to construct a memory care facility that's, will work in conjunction with an already-approved senior living facility. As I mentioned, the use of As I mentioned, the use of an assisted living facility, it does require a special exception, which was granted. The parking standards, this does comply, they've provided 15 parking spaces, which is adequate for the quantity of employees and the needed guest parking. Landscaping, the site, it does include foundation plantings around the proposed building, the parking lot and the trees. They do comply with the regulations of the code. There were 107 mitigation trees that were required that are being planted on this site as well. And the building height does comply because they were granted the special exception for the one-story building. And the building materials do comply with our requirements. It's mostly brick with some hardy board siding accents. Engineering did provide comments related to access, traffic impact analysis, utilities, and stormwater. And all other departments have reviewed and recommend approval. Staff recommends approval of the site plan for the Oxford Farms Senior Living Phase 2 Memory Care Building with the following conditions. The regional pond needs to be designed to manage the runoff from senior living memory care and the adjoining site for the grading shown on Sheet DA-2 of the stormwater detention calculations dated on 11/17/20. Regional pond will revert to a temporary status until there is clarification regarding the adjoining site. Condition number two is the adjoining site will need temporary stormwater management for any portion of the site that is not captured by the regional pond, again, based on the grading shown on the sheet DA-2. Number three, it is not clear if the shared ownership documents were ever developed. There are email exchanges in March 2020 discussing this issue, both internally and with the design. Were the documents developed? If so, please include as part of the report. And then, these comments do not require resolution in order for the case to be heard by the planning commission, and the pending stormwater approval is noted in the report, and then otherwise approved, submitted.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions here? Hearing none, any questions online? Commissioner Freeman, Commissioner King?
No. No questions.
All right, hearing no questions, anyone here in the audience wish to comment?
Commissioner, a quick question right here.
Go ahead, Joe.
This, the temporary pond that's going to, it says it's going to be enlarged for future development, but it's going to be designed and constructed to be fully functional. Is it going to be the same size that it is designed to be right now? Are we going to enlarge it later? Those two seem to be going in opposite directions.
It'll probably be enlarged later.
Can you come up here, please?
Come on, Joey. You know the drill.
Joey Moore, Williams Engineering. It's kind of a complex situation because you've got multiple things being built that are all going to fit into the same pond. So, right now, the pond will function temporarily as a pond for memory care, senior living building, and the undeveloped YMCA site. So, when that, when the undeveloped site gets built, the pond will be reshaped to accommodate that as well. So you're kind of having to change the pond as you go as that whole area gets developed and everything gets pushed down to that pond.
Are you going to have enough space?
Yes, yes. We've got some room to the east and a little bit to the west, but we've been looking at that, it all fit in. We believe it all fit in there, we'll say that right now, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion as to case number 2698, the site plan approval for Oxford Farms Senior Living Phase 2.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions stated.
There is a motion to approve with the conditions stated. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor. Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
The motion carries. Case 2698 is approved. Which brings us to case number 2699. It's Andrew Calcutt. It's a request for a special exception as provided in Section 3.10.3.2. It's self-storage facilities. It's property located between South Boulevard and Jefferson Davis Extended. Ben?
So this property is located on South Lamar. I'm sure many of y'all have driven by this over the years. It's an existing, there's an existing storage facility. It's an outdoor-accessed storage facility. It's on, it's actually faces out towards South Lamar. It also faces out towards Jeff Davis Drive. The property, it measures about 2.27 acres. Like I mentioned, there are five existing one-story self-storage buildings. The property's own traditional neighborhood business, and as such, the applicant is requesting a special exception for an indoor climate-controlled storage facility. The standards for the traditional neighborhood business district do allow for a indoor storage facility with a couple criteria, that the storage units are actually accessed only from the interior of a building, and that the building also must be a mixed-use commercial building. Initially, the applicant provided a proposal that indicated two buildings. It would remove all of the existing one-story storage facility buildings. There was one elevation for the building and then one-floor plan for one of the buildings. And staff provided, initially provided a recommendation of denial. And since that time, since that report, the applicant has modified their request to just a singular building, one three-story, you know, indoor climate-controlled facility, and that would be the northern building. And so y'all, I know y'all have received that. It's also posted online with our recommendation. So three of the current storage buildings would be removed in order to construct this three-story self-storage building that includes, it would be an office for the facility. You know, oftentimes, they have, you know, packing supplies. They, sometimes they include shipping, shipping facilities or services like UPS or FedEx or PacMail, things like that. And then, and then on the third floor, the applicant is proposing about anywhere from 1,000 to 2,000 square feet of office facility, which would be two offices, reception area, a kitchen area, conference room, break room, et cetera. We do, you know, after reviewing the materials of what was initially submitted, we did, you know, suggest that we needed a landscaping plan and then also some, you know, better renderings of the building. And so I did provide some commentary on the elevations. The north and the west elevations present attractive facades. They do provide a storefront at the northwest corner of the building. The materials for these facades will be a combination of brick, fiber cement siding, stucco, metal panel canopies, windows. The south and the east elevations provide modest detailing with a brick and stucco wall. It incorporates windows, small portion of fiber cement siding, and what appears to be an emergency exit in the southwest and the northeast corner of the building. Since the east facade, it's situated along Public Street, which is Jefferson Davis Drive, and the south facade is, you know, is fairly visible as you're traveling north on South Lamar. We do believe that additional storefront detailings and canopy should be incorporated to look consistent with the other facades. As previously noted, this proposal did include a landscaping plan. It indicates frontage trees along South Lamar and Jefferson Davis Drive, foundation planting along the north and the east facades. Smaller trees are indicated along the south facade, and a mix of trees and ground plantings are proposed in the parking lot. Should this request be granted, the landscaping plan will be reviewed for compliance during the site plan review. However, staff does recommend adding a more robust landscape design, which can include evergreen shrubs, ornamental grasses, and seasonal plantings, or a combination of all of them, around the perimeter of the parking to help, the parking lot to help screen them from South Lamar, Belk Boulevard, and Jefferson Davis Drive. Additionally, staff believes that the additional foundation plantings should be installed along the west and the south facades. As stated in the initial staff report, staff believes that there is a need for this use on the port, this portion of town, especially based on our understanding of the occupancy rates of the existing facility. And through those discussions with the applicant, they're between 80 and 90% occupied, the existing facilities. And this modified proposal does propose to eliminate three of the existing and dated outdoor storage units in order to replace them with this three-story mixed-use building that incorporates the professional office retail and climate-controlled storage facilities that are only accessible from the interior of the building. And based on the new information provided by the applicant in this modified request, staff recommends approval of the special exception with the following conditions. Number one, that the south and the east facades are modified to incorporate staff's comments related to the storefront, adding storefront canopies due to their quite visible location to South Lamar Boulevard and Jefferson Davis Drive. The land, condition number two, the landscaping plan be modified to include a more robust landscaping design around the perimeter of the parking lot, and to add additional foundation plantings along the west and south facades. And condition number three, should the building permits not be issued within 18 months, the special exception shall expire.
We're hearing a request as to a special exception as to use. My question here is, are the conditions regarding landscaping and whatnot, isn't that something we would consider in site plan approval?
Well, it could be, but I think as part of this being a special exception request, I don't know that they're sufficient enough. And, you know, I think in granting the use, we're willing to support it so long as those elements are incorporated.
Well, I understand. I'm not, I'm not trying to be particular, although I am being particular in this case. I mean, I've granted the exception of a use, but voted against the site plan on particular projects because I was okay with the use, but what they planned for it, and how they were going to build whatever to accommodate that use, I disagreed with that. So, I mean, I just... I don't know. I mean, I'm just asking, I guess, Paul, I mean, aren't we just saying you can, you can use this for a storage facility, correct? As to what's being built, that will be later, right? And we can always deny it. Just, just because we've said you can do this for a use purposes doesn't mean that we have to approve what you plan to build to accommodate the use we've approved.
Well, the sort of, one of the things you see more prominently with the new code, redress special uses and special exceptions. And they really start to embrace the conditional nature of those approvals. Special exceptions are probably most discretionary in authority that you have. So I think you have a lot more leeway in putting conditions of whatever kind you want to, by the way. Taking into account by the time you get the site plan, the landscape plan, to use this example, that might be required, is not necessarily consistent with what the planning staff feels would facilitate the best implementation of that use. And if they don't think it's a good implementation of that use, then, you know, then I recommend that they use it. So, yeah, I hear what you're saying, and you're right, special exceptions are about use, but, you know, most places don't call them special exceptions. They call them conditional uses, the conditional use part of it. The real meat and potatoes of whether or not you do it is, is it appropriate in this location from a purely use standpoint, and what conditions should be put on it to ensure that it stays appropriate?
Fair enough.
You may have answered part of this, but, okay, for general, so I know generally, when we're doing this, like, the extra awnings that you want because of the street view, the extra landscaping and so on, this building could be used, I mean, from the shell of it, it could be used for lots of different things. If he had come to us with a use, if he had just come with a site plan with a, for a use that he did not need in permission for with this building, would you still be saying, I want these extra awnings, I want this extra landscaping? Or would the more minimal landscaping then, okay, if it was just an office building or whatever could be there without this?
Yeah, I think, I appreciate that question. I think you're right, you know. If there was an office building that was coming before us that doesn't require a special exception, I think that they could, we may not have the ability to require that higher level of architecture on the south side, for instance, because...
Okay, so that's my question. Why are we, because of this use that's on the interior, that you can't tell from the outside that it's a storage facility, then why are we requiring more landscaping because of something that's happening on the inside that you can't tell on the outside?
Because I think you don't know what's necessarily going to happen south of this building. I think, you know, you're going to have a taller building and it's quite, it's quite visible at this location, you know? And, you know, I think that the, you know, the elements in particular on the south side, you know, to the facade and on the east side, I don't think that that's substantial, you know, but it's, I think it's going to give us the ability to have a better-looking building overall by doing so.
I agree, but I think it's a better-looking building, and the more landscaping, the better, but I'm still not grasping why would we require that just because of what's going to happen inside the building? That's my, and not just for this one, for, you know, for general knowledge of when we do this.
Just, just as an effort to translate, I think what Ben's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what he's saying is, he would like to require that regardless. In this case, we actually have a discretion of that, is that right?
Correct.
Any additional comments, questions? I mean, I, again, I think, hey, this area needs this use, and it's being used as the same request, I guess it's being used as storage. I just think we can get to the meat and potatoes of landscaping and such in a site plan view, but I understand, Paul, how it identified, and that may be a sort of a carrot out there for, hey, we'll give you the use, but you need to do X, Y, and Z in this, as it goes through. I understand. So, any more questions online? I'm sorry, I'm rambling. Commissioner King, Commissioner Freeman, any questions, comments?
No, I'm going to vote for this because I think we've already got that use going on right there, and this is a much more attractive facility.
I agree.
I don't have any comments, Brian.
Thank you. Any comments? Andy? Jeff? All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion on case number 2699.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions stated.
There's a motion to approve with the conditions stated. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor? All, online, Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
For the record, I'd vote to approve the special exception without conditions. I don't know how you want to mark that, but it's going to pass anyway. I just, the motion was stated with conditions stated, so it is approved. This brings us to three cases involving Rayner Eye Clinic and Surgery Center. The first is two...
Chair, I'm going to sit this case out. I don't know if Ben told you, but I'm going to sit this case out.
All three?
Yes.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Commissioner King is recusing himself from public hearing, excuse me, from case number 2700, 2701, and 2702. Hang in there, don't leave. We've got more work to do at the end.
Oh, I'm not going to miss the last thing on the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah. There's $100 at stake. All right. First is public hearing for case number 2700. It's Rayner Eye Clinic and Surgery Center. Their first request is for a variance from section 2.6.7 T and B. It's a front yard build-to-line maximum, property located at South Lamar Boulevard. Yes, sir?
All right, the subject property is located on approximately two acres in the Oxford Farms development. It's on the west side of South Lamar Boulevard, south of Oxford Way. The applicant is proposing to construct an eye clinic and surgery center. A site plan is currently under review for the property, and as he said, it's also the subject of case 2701 and 2702. This current request is for a variance from the build-to-line maximum. 2.6.7 of the LDC, so it's the maximum building setback at 58 feet in the T and B zoning district. The applicant is requesting variance of approximately 32 feet for a total setback of about 90 feet. The applicant and their architect and engineer met with planning staff earlier this fall to discuss the project, and which planning staff expressed the reservations about the number of variances and special exceptions that would be required for this proposal. The applicant has provided several factors that they believe support this current request. The buildings to the south are set back approximately 80 feet from the property line, and placing the proposed building any closer would disrupt the rhythm of the street. A 20-foot landscape buffer along South Lamar is included as per the Oxford Farm development requirements. And third, applicants desire the building front towards South Lamar to be a true building front. And due to the nature of the clientele, who are usually older, there is a necessity to have adequate parking near the main entrance. Additionally, the applicants would prefer to have two double rows of parking in the front, but they are making the concession for a single double row. Bringing the proposed building in line with existing buildings to the south is a reasonable request, and maintaining the landscaping buffer along South Lamar is also reasonable. But the intent of the setback requirements in the T and B is to facilitate no more than a single row of parking in the front of businesses. Parking should, to the greatest extent possible, be located behind or to the side of a building, especially along major transportation corridors like South Lamar. The buildings to the south do not have parking along South Lamar, and as such, a double row would be out of place. The factors cited by the applicant are worthy of consideration, but the bottom line for this request is that the code requirements for the site plan are being asked to conform to the design needs of the applicant, rather than the applicant finding a lot that better conforms to their design needs. A 20-foot landscape buffer, two rows of 18-foot parking, 26 feet of fire access, sidewalk, frontage plantings, and all the associated curbs wouldn't even fit inside 90 feet. If having two rows of parking is necessary to the proper function of this use, a different site located in a different zone that allows for a larger front yard setback may be necessary. Failing that, design avenues are open to the applicant to have the site conform to LDC standards. Staff recommends approval of the requested variance to maintain the rhythm of the surrounding development with the following conditions. The approval is for no greater than the distance of the existing setback for the buildings to the south. The site plan for the proposed building shall have included foundation plantings. The site plan for the proposed building shall have no more than a single row of parking in the front yard.
Again, I'm sorry. The front build-to-line, we're going to, there's a requirement that we restrict their parking even though the request for the front build-to-line variance is supported by keeping the rhythm of the area. I mean, again, I'm just pointing that out. That's fine. It seems to me that that would be, overall, the part of another case which is coming up regardless. I'm just making that statement for the record. Any, any questions? I think the applicant's here.
Yeah, we're here to speak.
You want to, Stuart, you, you want to present something?
Yeah, ma'am, just making a couple points.
Certainly. Are, are we talking, we're going, is this just the front build-to-line?
It is, yeah, that's really the, I think, the topic of the night. And I won't belabor all the points that were made in our application. You know, one of the things we do in our due diligence is to look at existing conditions and look at those proposed as well, right? So, we've, we've touched on the buildings immediately to the south of us. As the existing rhythm of the, of the street, you know, we, we can't help but look at the proposed buildings that, the site plan that you all approved tonight. And, look, I know that every case is its own case to be decided on its own merits, but it's, it's hard to, to look at what is really a substantially similar, if not identical, project to the south of us in the same development with the same zoning that was given approval for this same request with parking between the building and the street. Now, I do want to touch on what you said, Brian, that the two are really mutually exclusive and, but we understand that because we're showing it and we are asking, we're going, we intend to ask for it, that that's, it needs to be discussed. We want to go ahead and kind of have that discussion, even though what we're really asking for is the maximum setback like we're showing, and parking will review, be reviewed in the site plan review process. So, that's a point we also wanted to touch on, that you have touched on, Brian. And, and, you know, like I said, it's hard for us and for the doctors who are here tonight to look at that memory care facility that has been approved and is, quite frankly, identical to, to the building they're proposing as well, and ask why, why such different staff reports, you know, between the two. So, what they're asking for tonight is, is approval of that setback as shown without the conditions. And we're here with Jeff Williams, who is, Jeff and Joey, who are civil engineers as well, and of course, were on that previous job as well.
Right, the conditions were, I know, the parking was one to this?
It would be, yes, the conditions were for, essentially to move it 10 feet
Sure.
...closer, to make sure that there are foundation plantings included with the site plan, and that if there is going to be parking in the front, that is for no more than a single row of parking, as the T and B zoning
Okay.
anticipates.
Any questions? Any comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, do you have a comment or question?
Yes, I have a question just to Ben as to why condition number three is in this item but wasn't in the previous item?
Condition number three.
The one we approved earlier this evening?
Condition thirty-three is that we're to park. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, that was, Bill, that was actually a variance that was previously granted for, for the setback line and, or for the front build-to-line that allowed for that building to be a little bit, you know, farther away, allows for, had two rows of parking, and I think part of that was because of the nature of the use in that instance, where you have a, a memory care facility, which is, you probably are going to have more people that need assistance and access to that front door, and perhaps with that senior living facility also.
Which I'd like to note, we have the same. I've asked the doctors what their average age is, and, and they jokingly said, probably every person in that assisted living facility will be their patient. It's 70-plus, we have the exact same concerns as, as they do in their facility. One thing that was just mentioned to me also is that, as y'all know, Andy has a team of really, you know, world-renowned planners, sort of master planning this site, and, you know, they've reviewed this as well, along with the, the double-loaded parking in the, in the two projects to the south of us, and, you know, they're, they're comfortable with it as well. One more thing I'd like to note is that, you know, we've got a 20-foot landscape buffer that sets our parking 30-plus feet away from the curb, whereas the ones to the south, which, which have been approved, those front bumpers are 10 feet or less from the curb of South Lamar. So, we have an opportunity to, to plant additional planting similar to what was approved with the orthopedic group building, and I've talked to Henry Minor about things we can do and things we can offer, which would be a condition we would support for additional plant screening, understory, screen trees, things like that.
Any additional questions or comments?
Would y'all be interested in just hearing why that, you know, we're requesting a parking?
Dr. Tan, you may certainly come up and-
Well, I mean, it's, it's the same thing basically you said, but when, you know, we started this process, you know, our first iteration was to have all the parking in the front, you know, because of patient access, but, you know, these guys widely, wisely counseled us that that would, that would not work. But if you look at the plan, too, we have, it's really just one full row of parking, the other parking's against the building, and it's all handicap. We're just trying to get as much access for these older peoples. We have wheelchairs, we have walkers, we have family members helping all day long, and some of y'all have probably been to our clinic, sat in the waiting room, and have seen our population. So, we're, you know, we're a cataract surgery practice, everyone's in the older demographic, and that's why. The more we can have closer to the front door, the better, and that's really the only reason, you know? We considered turning the building around and having all the parking in the back, but then that didn't match the other buildings, to have the back on the street, and, you know, it didn't, you know, Andy Calcutt didn't really want that. We didn't really want that, but whatever we can do to get as, as many people with as easy access to the front door as possible, and that's all.
What's the minimum number of handicap spots y'all have to have?
It would be, we have 96 spaces, so it would be five, I believe, and I think it's over that. Is that right? Five, I think we have eight.
Yeah, very.
So, we're trying to get as much as we can, because every single one of those would be filled, you know, and we're all needed.
You say more needed?
I mean, potentially, yeah. I mean, I, I think that during, you know, they have busy hours and, and, you know, sort of rushes, right, as people come for surgery and then are leaving, and the next wave of surgery. So, you know, they anticipate they may even need more handicap than, than, than what we're showing, but, you know, we've exceeded the, the minimum.
And I don't want to confuse the two requests or the three requests, I'm, I'm just trying to, I will take all the comments when we deal with everything here. From the standpoint of the front yard build-to-line request for variance, is there any more comments or questions? All right. Hearing none on the variance, is there a motion regarding the variance request on case number 2700?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Freeman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance request without condition number three.
I have a motion to approve without condition number three. Is there a second of that motion? Is there a motion anyone would like to make?
I want to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to talk about that. One and three are really kind of inextricable, inextricably linked, right? Because- It's, it's a motion made. I mean, I, you know, it's either going to get seconded or not. I mean, we can talk about it, but it's, there's a motion pending on the floor. So, Commissioner Freeman, your motion was to, made to, to approve without, without condition number three. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right.
Can I ask for clarification on condition one?
Sure.
How many, how many buildings south are we going? Because the pediatric group is right up on the road, so.
Which buildings to the south? How far down south from are we going?
The two immediate.
The two immediate, okay.
Understand? Any more questions? The motion pending is to approve without condition number three. Is there a second of that motion or another motion which needs to be made?
May I s-
Is there any other motion? All right, that, that motion will die for a second. Yes.
Sorry, I, I'm sorry to interrupt and break up the process. Yes, I mean, the reason the two are linked is because what we're looking for is double-loaded parking, like we're showing. The building does need to be set back. Jeff and his group looked at it, maybe five feet from the building most immediate to the south of us. So, that dimension that we showed on our site plan review, which is, I think, 90 feet, is, is what we need to get that double-loaded parking. And if you compare that to the memory care building and the assisted living, you know, they're 75 feet, but they don't have that 20-foot buffer that we have. And that's why we're a little further back if we're comparing those two projects. So, that's why the two are kind of linked, you know?
Okay, can you, is it really five feet? How, how far really are you asking to come back from the next-door building? I mean, you should really know, how, how many feet is that? About five feet won't get it.
It's hard to say. It really depends on where Ben's going to take the front of the building, because the building has some jobs in it, but where do you take that front? We had that conversation with Ben. We have an awning that extends out way closer to the road than that, but that doesn't count as the building front. So, if you've got a building front and it docks in a foot here, a foot out here, where's that front at? And I will be able to answer that question accordingly.
Well, because, and I know, you know, maybe this isn't exact, where you have the green buildings and your buildings, and, you know, if you just put your pin straight on here, that's like three parking places, which is 18 feet. So, I mean, whether it's five or six feet is one thing, but is it five feet or is it 18 feet? That's a big difference.
I drew a line on Friday, lined it up to the building just to the south, the empty building that's there is when us and the, when it's planning, and we had to put the building by the, with the outside, not telling them there's one foot jobs in, but the outside corner of the building, it was like it was five, six feet, and I think right there.
You agree with that? Okay.
All right. With that discussion, is there a motion to approve or motion to deny?
Can I ask one more question?
You may ask away. Let's, let's get all the information out.
How many total parking places are there?
Four down.
Not including handicap?
It should be on the first sheet, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, I was looking on-
It's in the other.
I think it's not, yeah, it's in the max parking, I think it's 96,
I'd say.
Including the, the handicap parking, which from, oh, God.
And how many are required?
Five.
Five. No, not handicap, traditional.
Oh.
Third, I'm just, just about.
Eighty, uh, sorry.
Eighty-five spaces.
Would be allowed with the 25% bump. 68 is required.
68 required is the minimum. Eighty-five allowed by right, and 96 requested.
the variance requested in case 2700, it's my understanding it will maintain the rhythm of the street. Joey, you agree?
Correct, it will look identical to what's there now.
Okay. All right.
Last question. Understanding, you know, how we feel about parking and all the parking in the front and so forth, that very front row of just the traditional parking spaces, y'all are saying you need more handicap spots, and you're over the number of traditional spaces that are required. Would it work for you all to have those as handicap as well?
Duncan, just to clarify, there were-
Yeah. For Stuart, but, you know, typically, you try, you're trying to locate your parking, your accessible spaces as close to the building as possible. You want to try and minimize the conflict of, you know, somebody with a disability having to have that conflict with cars that are coming through, so try and put them as close to each other.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be a major concern to us, is having them cross a drive aisle to get to the building, yeah.
Can I speak to that for just a second? Just about parking in general, regardless of where you put it? One of the main reasons for us, our move is that we desperately need more parking. We're at 67 or something spaces where we are now, and, you know, so regardless of where you put it, the more we can have, the better.
Sure.
Handicap ones take up extra size, that's why we kind of have it like that, we have them all against the building. You know, I mean, we're probably okay, but, you know, a lot of our people, they don't-
You know, we're probably okay, but, you know, a lot of our people, they don't, as it is now, we have a few that'll park somewhere else. They need a handicap spot or they just need assistance. It happens all the time. And remember, our people can't see. So coming through the parking lot is, you know, also can be treacherous that way. And backing up and driving through.
Okay. Just to...
Or the, in fact, I, I thought we were gonna have trouble not getting enough, because the last time I looked years ago, medical office had to have something like two spots per hundred feet or something like that, um, which would put us crazy numbers. I'm glad it's not like that, but we still need significantly more than the sixty-seven or eight we have now.
Just to clarify for me, there are five ADA spaces required based on the square footage. You've got eight on the plan. Is there a desire for more ADA spaces or is that sufficient?
Well, I, I mean, I, I think that that's probably sufficient. You know, when I said that they could use more, I think that there probably is some time when there's overflow, you know, people that probably have a placard, but are, you know, there isn't a space for them. But no, I don't think the intention is to try and add more. I think they're good with what we're showing.
All right. Any more comments, questions? Again, I, I think that the comments are, and for this variance is it, it maintains the rhythm of the, the street and, and that's a primary concern for this variance is to the, um, front yard build-to-line. I understand it all works in conjunction with one another, but, uh, that seems to be a prime, at least my primary concern. Now, again, this is a variance for the front build-to-line. Is there a, we've had a motion, it, it has failed for lack of a second. Is there a motion to be made as to case number 2700, the request for variance, um, from the front yard build-to-line?
Brian, real quick.
Yeah, Judge.
Is it fifty feet or fifty-eight feet?
Fifty-eight.
Okay. Because I'm looking at the memory care and they've got a fifty, fifty-foot, as in five-zero max build-to-line. And I'm just wondering, is this just a typo on there?
Yeah, well, so I think it, it changed. It changed from the time that they came over to that requirement, it changed from fifty feet to fifty-eight.
So did they build it at, I mean, did we vary based off of fifty-eight or fifty for them? I'm just saying, if we're gonna try to be in conjunction with the other buildings, if their, if theirs was fifty and now we're looking at fifty-eight, well, that's eight extra feet, right?
Well, I think their, their requirement was fifty, but then they ultimately done a variance for the build-to-line to be where the building is situated now.
And you think it's fifty-eight?
No, memory care.
Memory care.
Seventy-five, that's right.
Okay. As long as we're taking into account that, that's all of us.
Yeah, well, while we're taking things into account, the, on one of the sheets, it's not numbered, but it's the one with the, the green squares for the southern buildings. There are also these orange rectangles for, uh, buildings to the north at the corner.
Totally fictitious, nothing planned. That was just me saying, I think that there are intentions to develop that site with some sort of development by Andy, but I don't, you know, I, I just threw those in to sort of note there is going to be development on the corner.
Okay.
So I want to make sure I understand before I do anything. The variance as asked for is for a fifty-eight foot? No, setback.
It's for thirty or so feet in addition to the fifty-eight feet.
In addition to?
Yeah.
Right, right, right. Okay.
Yeah.
But then that puts it, that puts it at ninety?
Ninety, yeah.
It's ninety.
That's ninety. But that is only, but the building you're saying would only be about five feet different than the building next door to it.
That's right.
But it would have, then you would fit the two rows of parking like you want. And just down the street, we have two rows of parking with a building even farther back than that. So to me, keeping the rhythm of the street does not mean every single thing is exactly like this. I think it means you don't have a Walmart way back there and then something sitting up on the road. So I think the five feet is like a Christmas tree in the forest. I don't think anybody's ever going to be able to tell there's five feet difference when they're standing between those buildings. And I don't think that having two rows of parking is that drastic compared to when you have more, you know, a few buildings down and whatever. So I want to make sure I have that right before I make a motion. It's the ninety feet, but that's still only five feet behind the building that's next door. Okay.
Yeah, their, their ask is for ninety.
For ninety.
Building to be located ninety feet from, from the parking lot.
And that's their only ask in this one?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Then I would make a motion to approve, um, this without recommendation one and three.
Does everyone understand? Bill, do you understand the motion?
Yes, and I would second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion here. All right. Bill, how do you vote?
Uh, yes, in favor of the motion.
All right. The motion is approved, eliminating conditions one and three. Which brings us to case 2701. It's a request for a special exception for T and B, one-story building property located at South Lamar Boulevard.
Okay, uh, and so, yeah, so this is for a single-story structure in a T and B district. Uh, the applicant states that the proposed use does not wind itself towards multiple floors. Uh, the proposed design has a two-story light presence towards South Lamar and that other one-story medical offices exist in the immediate vicinity of T and B. Uh, staff acknowledges that other single-story offices do exist in the immediate vicinity, including Oxford Pediatric and Oxford Clinic for Women. Uh, the architectural elevations show a front facade that begins to have the appearance of a building that is larger than one story. Uh, the roof line is approximately thirty-six feet and there is a dormer window that gives the appearance of a potential second story. Uh, as both the north and south sides will be seen from South Lamar, uh, which is an arterial, uh, section five point six point two point two requires that those fronts be treated as building fronts. Um, uh, staff would like to see additional architectural elements along those elevations that enhance the appearance of a potential second story. Uh, and with that, staff recommends approval of the requested special exception with the following condition, uh, that the architectural elevations, uh, should include additional elements, uh, such as, but not limited to, windows, uh, dormers, et cetera, on the north and south facades to enhance the appearance of the potential second story.
Any questions or comments on this request? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion as to case number 2701, the request for a special exception for a one-story building.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with the condition stated.
That's a motion to approve, condition stated. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor. Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yeah.
It is approved. Lastly is case number 2702. It's Rayner Eye Clinic and Surgery Center. It's a request for a variance for parking property located at South Lamar Boulevard.
And, okay, so this one is for...
Go ahead.
Yep. Uh, variance to exceed the maximum parking requirements. Policy requires that minimum parking for medical facilities is one space per two fifty, uh, square feet of gross floor area. Uh, that the proposed use is sixteen thousand nine sixty, which would set a parking minimum. Uh, sixty-eight spaces, four point nine point one point one, uh, allows parking to exceed the minimum by twenty-five percent. With twenty-five percent, you're up to eighty-five. Uh, the applicant is proposing ninety-six spaces, which would be eleven over the maximum allowed, uh, or approximately forty-one percent over the required minimum. Uh, the applicant states that on a daily basis, fifty spaces will be used by staff and that anticipated patient counts would require another forty-four spaces. And staff finds these calculations to be reasonable and believes hardship exists due to the unique, uh, nature of business. And with that, staff recommends approval of the requested variance for ninety-six total parking spaces.
Any discussion as to 2702? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion as to the request for variance, um, from three point nine point one point three, parking for Rayner Eye Clinic and Surgery Center.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor. Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote? Thank you. It is approved. Lastly, we have public hearing for case number 2704. It's a quest for amendments to the Land Development Code to correct mistakes and to make modifications. You're all welcome to stay and listen, should you choose.
Should be really...
Or you may get up and leave, which I see everyone is elected to do.
Wait, that's not fair. What about me?
Oh, Marvin's back.
Marvin's back.
You may not leave. You got money on it.
So, uh, we have a few changes to the Land Development Code that, uh, we would like to propose. Um, article number two, uh, it, it actually is, um, so related to the medical district that, uh, that we had the institutional medical, it has that size limitation, which requires a special exception for anything that's fifteen thousand square feet, uh, or over. And, uh, if you remember, we made that modification to the medical office uses that actually raises that threshold to twenty-five thousand square feet. So we're being consistent here. We just, uh, we just cut it because we haven't had anything proposed in the institutional medical and we just didn't, we just didn't catch it. So now we have, we're proposing that modification. A change to the distance, uh, related to, um, the residential common interest development, uh, standards for building separation between detached structures. So that way they can be consistent with side yard setbacks of ten, ten feet, which would be consistent with, uh, most of the underlying zoning. So it actually talks about the underlying zoning districts should be the, uh, you should follow the standards, but no less than, uh, no less than ten feet. Uh, proposing a new use, which would be an event space or banquet hall slash reception hall. Um, we've had several people that have been, uh, have been, you know, seeking the ability to do this and quite honestly, you see this, uh, uh, as an avenue for maybe, uh, older historic homes that, that are larger and trying to find, you know, some uses, uh, secondary uses for them or, uh, or just even inside, uh, uh, certain districts where somebody's looking for like a new venue for reception. So we've put the standards here, got to have a, a parking plan, um, and, uh, you know, all, all the standards related to the, uh, the zoning districts where it would be allowed to have a parking plan. And then, uh, we do have some additional standards that you have to comply with the noise requirements of the code. Just put that explicitly in there. When adjacent to attached or detached residential uses, outdoor activities shall be limited to thirty patrons. Now, I did have a phone call about this, uh, earlier today, about is thirty, is thirty the right number? Because you could have an outdoor, uh, lunch-in and, and think maybe, um, uh, organizations that are maybe having, uh, uh, you know, some sort of a, uh, whether it's, um, you know, Visit Oxford's having a social, uh, social thing at a, uh, you know, one of these venues. That was the question, is thirty the right number? Is that a little bit too limiting or is there the ability to have maybe some flexibility in that number perhaps through, through a special exception? I think that that's a, that's something, especially during the daytime. And that's what this person was saying. If I was having a lunch-in and I wanted to have, you know, fifty people at the lunch-in, uh, you know, I wouldn't be able to propose that. And during the daytime, that might make, make good sense.
Remember that fraternity rush parties happen during the daytime too. So just, just keep that in mind. You don't want to just leave it open in general, just because it's daytime.
How does one enforce that? Thirty people, if you just show up and say you have forty people and, uh, this, I mean...
I mean, if, you know, they're, they're subject to that requirement when they seek the use, you know?
Yeah. It's there, it's on them to maintain it.
That's right.
If they don't and we happen to...
And we get a complaint and we go there, then you're subject to the penalty provisions of...
Which you're bound to get a complaint for thirty people, twenty people.
They, they have.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I understand. Well, you'll get a complaint with five people, but that's fine.
But between now and, uh, and this going before the Maron Board of Alderman, we, we may look to see if we can tweak that number so that it provides, uh, maybe some discretion or maybe the ability for somebody to come and request, uh, the ability to have, you know, subject to maybe a special exception and to have, uh, you know, maybe during the hours of such and such. So we may look to see how we can modify that, given that comment, something that we hadn't really, uh, appreciated until then. Uh, we do limit the hours of, uh, operation for outdoor, uh, outdoor activities. So when you're adjacent to, uh, residential attached or detached, then, um, you know, ten, ten PM for outdoor activities. And, uh, so I think for the most part, that's it for that use. Are there any questions on that?
I, I want to understand where they can be, because you mentioned historic homes, whatever. Historic homes are all right around here.
Okay, I'm just, I was throwing that out. Historic homes, that seems to be...
That's where it's planned.
A mechanism.
Awesome. But, okay. So like, I was thinking like the Shaw House, how fantastic that would be as a venue.
Correct.
Under this, could that happen?
They could propose it. Uh, they, they would have to seek a, a special exception though, before the commission.
But what about the parking plan is my question? Like, you're not going to be able to have a parking lot in a, at any historic home around here.
And I don't think that we would want that, but I think having a plan of maybe you're going to shuttle people to parking lot, maybe you've worked with these, I'm not saying that they would, but the school district or another business where, you know, they have a private lot and you have valet parking or, or something like that. Those would be the things that we would want to consider. Okay? And then, um, a slight tweak to, um, reduction in parking numbers. Uh, so right now we have a twenty-five percent reduction in the total of spaces when requirements cause the potential for demolition of a historic structure or environmental features such as tree stands or streams, or, uh, we're adding, or in the instance of non-residential uses in a mixed-use structure. So commercial, commercial buildings and somebody wants to propose slightly less parking than, uh, than what is required, then we would be able to do that administrative waiver. And then in article five, um, we're, we're striking, um, we have a pretty stringent requirement for one tree per fifteen square feet and four shrubs per two thousand square feet. That's, um, uh, that's not feasible, uh, period. Uh, and so we're just striking it. We think that our landscaping standards have actually been doing really well for us. Uh, we have a requirement for parking lot trees, frontage trees, edge landscaping, and so we're just going to cut it back to just say, shall be landscaped with trees and shrubs. And that would be the extent of our modifications right now.
Gives you more discretion.
Or just to apply the existing...
More discretion.
To apply, yeah.
Any discussion about these amendments? Any additional discussion?
Yeah, Ben, just what, and I may have missed this when I stepped in the restroom, but what's driving the, the, uh, medical, you know, versus the institutional medical standards and why that change?
We had our first proposal for an institutional medical building inside of the institutional medical district. And, uh, and so we made that change to twenty-five thousand square feet to be consistent with. A few months ago, we made modifications to medical office buildings for that threshold to be twenty-five thousand square feet. So you wouldn't have to seek a special exception if you're proposing a, say, twenty thousand square foot medical office building in the institutional medical district. It would be a special use requirement. Right now they have to, uh, when it's over fifteen thousand square feet, they have to come and seek that.
Where did the, that square footage, that initial square footage come from?
The fifteen thousand square feet? Uh, that was the way it came from our consultants when we rewrote the... That's right.
How about you guys at home? Any questions?
No, no question.
All right.
Is there a motion for that?
I'm getting to it, Ben, gosh.
Motion to adjourn.
Good lord.
Wait, I have a question.
Let's see.
Sorry.
You just can't jump out and make motions willy-nilly.
Um, well, I have two, sorry. Okay. One is, and I just may be too dense to understand this... Um, one is, and I just may be too dense to understand this, modifying the front yard build-two line, but then you didn't list that in here. Did I miss that?
Where?
The first thing you say, the changes include modi, modifying front build-two lines, max standards, T and B, S E O, S C N districts.
You can just strike that.
Okay. Okay. The other thing is, could we.
Strike all of it.
Put in somewhere, um, about, and I guess this would be under planning, even though it happens under historic, um, like when there's an emergency demolition, and we apparently don't have in the code that you still need to pay a bond even though it's an emergency? Emergency. So then the lot can just sit there for months and months and months with nothing happening?
So that would be something that, uh, we would have to evaluate, and we're actually having discussions about, uh, incorporating into the historic preservation ordinance, which is not inside the land development code, that's part of the municipal code.
Okay.
It's a, it's a conversation that we're having with the H P C and, uh, and Courthouse Square District right now.
The pavilion or the old apartment, it fall under this, events, place, bank, reception hall, description?
If it was privately owned, sure, I think somebody could make that request.
And then, I know this is, facilities, it's going to be recognized as an events, place, bank, reception hall, dual-purpose.
Uh, I mean, I think it could be a dual-purpose facility.
Facility.
I, I think it depends on the circumstances. I mean, it could be, you know, an office space that has some event space incorporated into hotels. Uh, that's probably not a good answer, but a, a, a good response, but I mean, you know, those are the types of things that we're looking at, um, how that request, you know, is presented, but I think there are circumstances where it could be not just a singular use.
Any additional questions or comments?
Uh, Mark, I have an additional question, but not on, anything on the agenda. The next meeting, last year, January, added on the second Monday of, uh, wait, yeah, never mind, I, I got thrown off, I was looking at the wrong calendar, never mind.
It's two thousand twenty.
Yep.
It's almost over.
I know.
Sorry, just to follow.
I do that all the time. It took me six ti, six tries to get a, something set because I kept looking at the wrong days. Okay.
I just want to follow up on Duncan's.
Go ahead.
Which is that, you know, I guess my question is for, for spaces that may have some other primary purpose but may be used as an event space secondarily, is there supposed to be a permit process for being able to use it in that?
Currently, or as part of?
It is part of you, okay.
That was a question. I'm asking you.
Oh, yeah.
Are you saying as part of this use?
Yes. I mean, you know, if you build something that has a daytime purpose, but it has a large open area and you decide you want it to be an event, venue.
I think that we would, we would want that to also fall under this.
Yeah, so I guess just the logistics, do, does it automatically fall under that, the first time you, you host an event there, or do they need to apply for a permit to be able to host an event?
I think they would apply for the permit to be able to host.
That would be one.
So when there's an event at your pool?
I will get it permitted.
Any questions? Any additional questions? All right. Is there a motion to approve the amendments and corrections to the Land Development Code as proposed?
So moved.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
The amendments and corrections are approved.
Motion to adjourn.
There is a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
There is a second. All in favor? Commissioner King, Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote yes, but I would like to make a quick comment that I attended last week, the conference that was hosted by the Joint Alabama and Mississippi Planning Staff for Municipalities. Our staff did a great job, both current and previous staff, and I appreciate their work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. The motion carries, we are adjourned next month. Pick up your.